And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners July 10, 2014, business meeting. I'll ask Mr. Krupp to take the roll call, please.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Please note that Commissioner Schrader is at a NACO conference on behalf of the county and is excused from this meeting. Please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order, as we have made it, and it should always be, whenever possible, the citizens communication, we have two cards so far. Ms. Nancy Hall and Mr. Les Poole.
Back.
Hello.
Nancy Hall, Happy Valley. In the transportation system plan adopted in late 2013, there was a project numbered 1073. It was a small road project about two blocks long. The county estimated it would take $7 million to build. Curiously, the small road was a Tier One top priority project even though the public wasn't clamoring for it. So who wanted this road? Eagle Landing, the massive project poised to be foisted on the neighborhoods surrounding the New Hope Church. This road Eagle Landing wants would solely be built on their private property and cut through the middle of their development. This road has resurfaced in a different scheme. The county owns the Stevens Orchard Apartments located at the corner of Southeast Stevens and Bob Schumacher. These apartments are joined the southern border of the New Hope Church property. The land New Hope Church sits on is part of the proposed Eagle Landing development. Manifest Destiny has overcome Eagle Landing. They want to expand their property boundary and the Stevens Orchard Apartments are in their way. Eagle Landing could buy the Stevens Orchard Apartments, but that's not what they want. They want the county to give the land to them. Eagle Landing's first plan was to exchange their right-of-way for the deed entitled to the Stevens Orchard Apartments and have the county build the road through their development. My understanding is Eagle Landing has modified this scheme. Now, if the county gives them the deed and title to the Stevens Orchard Apartments, Eagle Landing will magnanimously build their own road. Apparently Eagle Landing's rationale for feeling entitled to annex this land for free is that the future project will produce tax revenue for the county. Paying tax revenue to the county is a given. County taxpayers pay millions for the Stevens Orchard Apartments. Can the county afford to be giving away property? As managers of the taxpayers' money, the "have your cake and eat it too" doctrine must be applied. Eagle Landing buys the Stevens Orchard Apartments at market rate and the county still collects tax revenue from the project in the future. That's the best deal for taxpayers. A definition of crony capitalism is, instead of success being determined by a free market and the rule of law, the success of a business is dependent on the favoritism that is shown to it by the ruling government in the form of tax breaks, government grants, and other incentives. Eagle Landing has already received discounts and other incentives from the county. Couple this with their free land plan and you have crony capitalism. Eagle Landing developers have touted they plan to give away electric cars to people who buy residence in their development. I guess they can be so generous considering taxpayers are subsidizing their development. Enough is enough. The county should not be giving away land to a private developer or building a road through a private development. I know Eagle Landing is in the back rooms twisting arms. However, this is a bad deal for taxpayers and the board must not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Just have a question, Ashley. I'm curious as to where you got that information.
Which part?
Most of it.
I, um, a lot of it was off their website.
Whose website?
Eagle Landing's.
Okay. I'll take a look at it.
All right. Oh, Tudy?
Yeah, I, um, will take a look at it also. The question I'm going to ask is, since the county owns Orchard Stevens Apartments, do we pay taxes on it? I don't think so. So, uh, that needs to be looked at as well because you talked about taking property off the tax rolls. I think the fact that maybe that the government owns Steven Orchards, we may not be paying taxes on it, but I don't know. I need to find that out.
I think you're right, Tudy.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm emailing that question right now to somebody. Thank you for raising that point.
I think the point we certainly discuss, and, you know, the question is, when you hold urban renewal property, and that is taxpayer money, you're right, Nancy, but when that is held by the Urban Renewal Agency as something that they procured for a reason, that was to build Schumacher Road, by the way, which is now complete, the question is, is it proper to then return it to the tax rolls? Return it there? Now, I don't have any doubt that we don't pay any taxes there. We certainly pay a management fee for somebody to take care of it, but perhaps it is time to return it to the tax rolls, and that's, that would be my, uh, my desire, and I've certainly spoken about urban renewal and the use of those funds many times before. But thank you for your testimony. Mr. Poole.
Good morning. Thanks again for another opportunity to speak. Um, a little quick word about the weather. It's going to be 100 here real soon. We're going to get our first real test of the alcohol ban on the Clackamas River. By the time it went into effect last year, it was 68 degrees Labor Day weekend and you didn't have a real chance to see the end result, but the test is coming and, uh, obviously the biggest concern is public safety. Um, I happened to hear on the news this morning that the last two days in Portland alone, they've had three river rescues. There's people being careless and crazy and getting themselves in trouble and, uh, it's all avoidable and unfortunate, so hopefully people will exercise good judgment out there, especially if they decide to have a few drinks. If you don't have good judgment before you drink, we know what your judgment is after you get started. Um, the budget, um, I came in and testified on a couple of the budget items and, uh, one of the things I saw this year that, that, uh, wasn't necessarily a part of the budget, but certainly was something that I was happy to see was prior to that Cindy from your Department of Human Services came in and gave a report about some of the accountability and some of the improvements they're making and how they're doing things. And we've got to continue to do that. We've got to continue to look for efficiencies. I'm not going to tell you something you're not already trying to do, but that message is out there. Um, I mentioned during one of my testimonies that there is a lot of public outrage over taxes and over spending. Commissioner Bernard said, "Well, gee, there's, there's really no one here. If they were mad, they'd be here." Well, so many folks don't bother to show up, which is sad. There's a lot of frustration, but I can assure you that the more outreach you do, the more evening meetings we have, uh, it will certainly help. Um, and we'll see how the vote goes on the road maintenance fee that probably will be on the ballot in the future. Um, it's not going well in Portland, and I know you're going to try and not emulate what they're doing. Last comments would be about the Gladstone Library situation. I've been involved in it for a long time, lived in Oak Grove 20 years and been in Gladstone a few blocks down the street for the last couple of years. When the library taxing district was created, the folks in Oak Grove did not know they would lose their library. Lots of folks didn't. I would have supported and voted for it in 2008, but I voted against it because of the closing of that library, and it was pretty easy to predict that down the road, we were going to be on a rocky path. And hopefully, uh, there'll be some resolution in the future. Um, it, it's been a long haul, and I do want to thank Kevin Johnson and some of the other folks that took it upon themselves and spent their own time and a lot of energy to get an opportunity to vote on that original plan because when there's a vote and something is ridiculously overpriced or unaffordable, it's turned down, and typically when there's a vote coming and you're planning something, when I say "you," I mean government, not the county, uh, what we see is a sharper pen from day one. Right now, there's an opportunity to look at a different location and possibly build a library and get something on the ballot so the voters can decide, and it's at least $3, $3.5 million less than what was originally proposed. So, uh, like Commissioner Savis and Ludlow, and I'm sure others agree, um, there's times when we need to vote. And when I hear that, that the, the citizens don't need to vote on everything, I certainly agree with that, but when our money and big money and debt is being incurred, we need to vote on it. Thank you much.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Savis?
So I attended a meeting last night regarding libraries, and, um, I think there was a, some frustration, uh, shared. So when you mentioned vote, is that majority of the people that are going to be supporting the new library are not going to be able to vote. It's only a minority who's going to be able to vote for this measure, and that's the, that's the people within the city of Gladstone. And, uh, was also shared is that somehow there's a, um, understanding or belief that the county is going to guarantee the operating cost in perpetuity for the Gladstone Library. I don't know where that came from, um, but, um, I don't think that's a, um, I think that needs to be clarified, that the library district will, by distribution of the dollars, will forward X amount of dollars, um, but no more than that. So I'm kind of curious as to the, some of the folks that have the belief because the language states that, um, for example, that no city funds will be used. So if there's an overrun anywhere, whether it's operational or it's building it, where will those dollars come from? And if, if, if the assumption is, I'm not asking Les Poole the question.
Right.
Per se, but I think, uh, there was discussion last night about an IGA that somehow the county's going to guarantee those funds, and, um, it seems to me that in discussion of that IGA, which will be on my issues list for, for next Tuesday, is some clarity as to, did we guarantee funds beyond what we're going to collect, uh, on ad valorem taxes, you know, on the district collecting, not the county, but the district?
All right. Could I interject real quick? I know I'm out of time, but.
You can just be quick, Les. You use a lot of. We've got a short agenda today. The, the issue is that if Oak Grove were to incorporate in the future and Oak Grove wanted to then change, change, that would change the playing field. If Oak Grove became a city and wanted to operate its own library or something changed in the governance of Oak Grove, would the operating money that's helping paying for the Gladstone Library go away?
Let's cut it off, Les. But here's, here's the thing.
Thank you.
We have discussed this, and you talk about a fairness issue. Here's Gladstone, and whether, you know, you like or don't like the fact they don't have any skin in the game, the fact of the matter is they've put together a potential solution, and that solution will cost X amount of money. They're going to go out and encumber themselves, subject to the vote, for long term to pay for that library. So, the question is, if Oak Grove wanted to incorporate, and I think there's a majority up here would say, "Please do so," if they were to incorporate, is it fair to all of a sudden say, "We're not going to give you that .39 cents per thousand anymore," Gladstone, "to service the debt which you've obligated for? We're going to all of a sudden pull that away from you?" I don't think so, and I expect that the IGA should say that the Oak Grove area is obligated through the retirement of that certain bond, no further. But, but certainly as far as surplus goes, and we had a great discussion about this, and we're certainly going to do some changes in regard to how you can spend the funds given by the library district, i.e. they're already spending it for capital, let's sanction that. But, but otherwise, you know, what's fair is fair. Gladstone's put a program together that everybody seems to accept. They're going to obligate their voters, subject to their approval, and then everybody should be in that until that bond is paid off. It's simply a matter of fairness to me. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I have an answer on the Stevens Orchard Apartments. What I asked Dan Jansen, our manager of the County Development Agency, does the county pay property taxes on Stevens Orchard and what's the amount? His answer was, yes. Any agency property that is leased or, quote, "in production" is prohibited from taking any tax exemption and is required to pay taxes. Last year, the agency paid $27,758 in taxes on the Stevens Orchard site. So it's not an exempt property, and my, and my evaluation, we'll continue on this and ask the question, if, um, it was transferred or sold or somehow leased to the Eagles Landing people, I would think that land value would increase in the tax, amount of taxes paid back to the county, hence the reason for wanting to do the property, develop the property. But that's all I'm going to say because I don't know anymore.
Okay. And now, we are at two public hearings. Mr. Krupp.
Uh, yes, we have two public hearings this morning, one in your capacity as the Board for the Tri-City Service District, the other in your capacity as the Board for the, excuse me?
It's a boundary change proposal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chris will explain.
I'll, I'll, okay. Let me, let me back up for a moment. I'm going to ask Mr. Story to answer, uh, this particular query, but this is a boundary change proposal before the Board. They have a Board order for a boundary change proposal for the Tri-City Service District, and I apologize for getting that mixed up.
You're, you're, you're forgiven.
And it is a little bit awkward. This is a boundary change proposal for the Tri-City Service District, but right now you are sitting as the Board of County Commissioners as the boundary authority over districts within Clackamas County. Both county service districts and independent districts come before you to have these annexations processed. As the Board of the Tri-City Service District previously, you have delegated the authority to the West Director to act on your behalf to accept the proposed annexations. So the Tri-City piece of it has already been taken care of administratively. This is just as the Board of County Commissioners. So this proposal, which we have our boundary expert, Ken Martin, here to talk about in greater detail, but is a proposal to add a piece of property that is close to Oregon City to annex into the district and receive service for sewer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ken Martin, your, uh, annexation coordinator, I guess, on these matters. This is a small annexation, well, 9.66 acres. Uh, it's a piece of property that's within the city of Oregon City, and all of Oregon City, Gladstone, and West Lynn are within the Tri-City Sewer District. The Tri-City Service District provides the treatment and the large lines for those cities. The cities then provide their own collector sewers, and that will be the case here. The property was annexed into Oregon City, and therefore it needs to be annexed into this larger district, and that's the purpose of this proposal. It's pretty straightforward. Uh, it happens every time we get an annexation to one of these cities that's not in that district, and we'd recommend approval.
All right. Commissioners, any clarifying questions?
Just one, I assume that's going to be annexed in as a, as a wholesale basis, obviously. It's not, we're not, annexing this as a retail.
Correct. Yeah, they will receive service through the city of Oregon City and will be charged the wholesale rate from the Tri-City Service District.
All right. So, um, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the Board order for boundary change proposal number CL 14-001 for Clackamas County Tri-City Service District.
I'll second that. All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? All right. Mary, the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. Next, Mr. Krupp.
All right. In your capacity as the Board of County Commissioners, we have a public hearing to consider a Board order for a boundary change proposal for the Clackamas County Service District Number One. I'll ask Mr. Chris Story from the County Council's office to present this item to you.
Uh, much the same as the annexation of the Tri-City Service District. This parcel is smaller. Uh, it's off 162nd Street, and, uh, the proposal, uh, I should have noted previously, one reason why this is coming to you in this relatively easy fashion is you have what's called the double majority rule, where a majority of the voters and a majority of the property owners within the proposed annexation area have pre-consented to annexation. Annexations could be subject to a vote, but are not necessarily, you don't have to, if those thresholds have been met, and they have in these instances. So there's no procedural requirement for a more formal election or additional hearing, which is why it's coming to you in this relatively informal manner. And with greater details, Mr. Ken Martin.
Martin?
This is a single-family dwelling, an existing dwelling. They desire sewer service. Again, they need to be inside the district. This property is already inside the city of Happy Valley. The district does have an eight-inch line in the street that can serve the property, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay.
All right. Any questions of the presenters? I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. All right. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the Board order for boundary change proposal number CL 14-002 for Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. And now, Mr. Krupp, it's time for the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Story.
So, uh, we're ready to move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, you are.
Okay. The consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a change order number three with Housing and Community Development and JWC for the River Road Head Start Kitchen remodel project. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Department of Health, Housing, and Human Services and the city of West Lynn for the West Lynn Senior Center Expansion Edition Project. Oh, number three was removed. You forgot to announce that at the beginning.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Number three's been removed.
Um, number three has been removed for, um...
So it's five. Hasn't five been removed, Mary?
No, just three.
A3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. A3's been removed for further staff review. Um, number four, A4, approval of an intergovernmental sub-recipient agreement with the city of Oregon City Pioneer Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age 60 and over. Approval of an agency service contract with Cascadia Behavior Healthcare for outpatient mental health services and outpatient substance abuse services. Approval of an agency service contract with Cascadia Behavior Healthcare for intensive case management and outpatient mental health services. Approval of an agency service contract with Catholic Community Services of Western Washington Home-Based Services, child level D and outpatient mental health services. Approval of an agency service contract with Columbia Care Services for supported housing services. Approval of an agency service agreement with Lake Oswego Counseling Center for outpatient mental health services. Approval of an agency service contract with Trillium Family Services for home-based stabilization services, child level D and outpatient mental health services. Approval of an agency service agreement with Trillium Family Services for psychiatric day treatment services for children and psychiatric residential treatment services and sub-acute psychiatric services for children. And approval of a professional services agreement with Cascadia Behavior Healthcare for peer support services at Villebois housing sites. Department of Transportation, we have approval of amendment number one to the local agency agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Sunnyside Road Adaptive Signal System Project. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife for a fish and wildlife biologist liaison for technical assistance for capital improvement and road maintenance programs. Under Finance, approval of amendment number four and renewal number two to the contract documents with Earthworks Landscape Services for landscape maintenance services for Clackamas County facilities. Up, um, under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Department of Emergency Management, approval of fiscal year 2012 Urban Area Security Initiative Intergovernmental Agreement Amendment Number One between Clackamas County and the city of Portland. Under the Department of Employee Services, we have a Board order for the approval of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Independent Retiree Medical Trust Fund. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, a Board order authorizing North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District to apply for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department Recreational Trails Program Grant for the Sunnyside Village Trail. And under the Development Agency, approval of amendment number two to the ground lease agreement between Clackamas County Development Agency and Oregon Iron Works for the Lay Down Yard and Streetcar Facility Agreement, and that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Um, anyone wish to remove any of these items? Otherwise, because I, as Mary pointed out, I kind of messed up, I will move, we approve the consent agenda, omitting item A3.
Uh, go ahead.
Second.
All right. A motion made by myself, Chair Ludlow, and seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? All right. Mary, the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. And now it's time for the county administrator update, who doesn't have a sling around his arm.
Yeah. So, so every day I gain a little better movement with my elbow. I have physical therapy later this afternoon, but, uh, the arm is actually feeling pretty good. I even went down to the gym last night. I didn't walk down there. I drove, uh, because I broke it walking down to the gym.
Yes, true.
So, but I was able to actually use the elliptical trainer, uh, which is, you know, movement like this, so I'm, I'm starting to feel like I'm getting back into things again. It's, it's feeling much better.
It's a remarkable recovery considering how complex the, that problem was.
Oh, yeah. Now, I can't quite move it close enough to do everything I need to do, so like shampooing my hair is a little tricky at times.
Well, thanks for sharing that with us, Mr..
Shaving is another one.
I opened up the can of worms. I apologize.
So I, I do have a couple of items this morning. Uh, one is, is of course, uh, a number of commissioners attended a, an open house and tour of Electric Entertainment, their studios, uh, over in the Clackamas industrial area a couple of weeks, weekends ago. Uh, and of course, uh, since that time, I've been learning about the fact that they've actually been pretty busy doing filming around the county. At my Rotary Club, uh, yesterday, I learned that they'd actually, have been filming for their series called The Librarians at the Oregon City Library and, and staging some filming there. But I'm also happy to share with you that, um, next week, Electric Entertainment will be filming part of an episode for The Librarians at the Tri-City Wastewater Treatment.
There you go. Quite a change from the Carnegie library.
Yeah, yeah. So, apparently, the, uh, the Membrane Reactor Gallery, uh, happens to be a perfect fit for the episode they have in mind, and so.
Oh, my gosh.
Be there. The actual episode will probably air in December, so, uh, we'll, we'll have to look for that. So I'm trying to figure out how I could get a cameo in there. We'll see.
You could be swimming around.
Oh, there you go. Take it the worst.
I'll get my suit. So the, the other item I have is a little piece of good news. So we, we received an email from a citizen in the county who had had some extensive concerns about the signal at Southeast 92nd and Johnson Creek. Uh, and our, uh, one of our employees, Christian Snuffin, with the Clackamas County Department of Transportation and Development, responded expeditiously and, and followed up to address each of this citizen's concerns. This resident said that because of the polite and informative service given, Christian deserves to be recognized as one of Clackamas County's best employees. Uh, and so we too would also like to recognize Christian for his outstanding customer service. Thought I'd do that here with you. I'll just read the final paragraph in the email we got. This, uh, this, it's quite an email, actually. It's, uh, the individual who sent it in spent some time composing this, so they were obviously very satisfied with county services. "I have an awesome team of my own to supervise, but it, it is, it always has not been that way, so I know how important it is to have a good employee. Christian is not only a good employee, he is a great employee, and he..." Christian is not only a good employee, he is a great employee, and he deserves to be recognized for it." So, very thoughtful email.
Keep those cards and letters coming in, folks, will you please? It's not that they're rare, but they are. So, yes, thank you for that. I think that's great to show that our employees, you know, we were just at the employee recognition luncheon, most of the commissioners, the other day. And I've said it before, but it is remarkable to see the longevity that people work here because they like doing so.
Yeah, it's a great organization.
The careers, you know, twenty, I was assigned in twenty, thirty, you know, year certificates recognizing these employees, but the strength of this county is definitely in their outstanding employees. So thank you for that. And now we'll go through Commissioner Communications, and we'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Oh, thank you. The librarian was a very fun event. Anytime you get a look at a set and see all the junk they collect, and it becomes this wonderful antique on the screen, and I'm a fan of the librarian, when the movie, I'm a fan of Jane Curtin, and I asked the producer, can I be like an extra with her? And the reason why I like Jane Curtin is this, not only she was remarkably funny on Saturday Night Live, but when I was pregnant with my daughter, we could not figure out a girl's name. So I'm like nine months pregnant, in the waiting room, reading the magazine article about Jane Curtin, and her daughter's name was Tess. I'd never heard that name before in nineteen ninety, and I thought, that's it. I went home and told my husband, you're not vetoing this name, because he vetoed everything. That's how I got my daughter's name Tess from Jane Curtin. A little piece of trivia that I'm sure you're bored with. Now, let's get on to the important stuff. Fourth of July celebration, I was in, I walked in the Mulala Parade, which is very long, but it was good for me, and the Camby Parade on the July Fourth. It amazes me how Americans are so funny with their parades. It's probably, you know, some of the corniest, funniest, down-home things you could do, and I was just thoroughly pleased to be able to participate. I only had one bad comment. A lady says, "I'm mad at you for tearing down the barn at the fair." And I says, "Will you vote for me anyway?" And she says, "Well, okay." So, because some people like that barn. Then at the end of the day, I went over to Shampui Park with the Daughters of American Revolution. They had sponsored an event of the reading of the Declaration of Independence, and I had never, ever participated in such a fun thing in my life. They had handed out scripts, and each of us read a line off the Declaration. There was like over forty people who would come up to the microphone and recite a part, and it just suddenly came alive with each different voice coming up and saying something, reading the actual words. And I was struck by the fact that I wish I had a recording of the people doing that because it just meant so much more. And as you listen to one line at a time from a different voice, you realize how relevant that is today. And you know, it's one thing to sit down and read it, yeah, 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 but when you hear it, it really came alive for me, and it was, I was quite enlightened by it. I also got to lead the Pledge of Allegiance and was in a pie judging contest. Good times. On July fifth, I went down to Cloverdale and was in the parade down there, and Cloverdale has a population of about two hundred and fifty. I think all two hundred and fifty people were on the parade route. And it was very funny, people came from all over, and the parade route goes through the middle of town, which is a little highway, and so while we're going on one side of the street on the parade route, the normal traffic is going by in the other direction, which I thought was hysterical, because if you're heading for the coast for the day, oh, I'm in a parade, don't even know it. So I'm walking down the thing, parade route, passing out my business card. Who's sitting there on the sidelines? You guys can't even guess this. Judge Karen Brisbane and her husband. She says, "What are you doing here?" And I says, "Well, what are you doing here?" So I met Mr. Judge, and it was quite nice, and we had a lot of fun talking. So that was my festivities for the Fourth. John and I had a, just a wonderful meeting about the California Sea Lions yesterday with a whole bunch of NOAA officials and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife officials. And we had about fifteen people in the room discussing the issue, and John's going to talk about it more in depth, but I was delighted that we had so many of our state and national officials come join us in Clackamas County for a really good discussion. I was totally educated on things, and that's the fun part of this job, you're always learning something new, so John's going to elaborate on that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Well, I think it was a couple, three weeks ago, I was mentioning a incident that I saw where an emergency vehicle was stuck in traffic, and I was thinking, gosh, you know, how sad that might be, or not knowing where they were going, where they were headed. And lo and behold, as we've been focusing and discussing a lot about transportation, and we're reading more, I think the article I saw in Oregon Live this morning was, ODOT was perhaps going to loan the federal government, or basically borrow money to continue some projects and wait for the federal government to pay them back, because the Highway Fund is in dire straits financially. So we're hoping our, in Washington DC, that they'll fund that, the Highway Fund. So, you know, the chair has mentioned, others have mentioned, you know, staff about the last survey, and some folks indicating that they felt that our roads were just fine, that they, you know, seventy-four percent, I believe, were just fine. And of course, it's who you ask. And last night, I was talking to some folks, and they were bringing up their local roads nearby, and they were not so fine. But Monday, I participated a little bit cheering on some of the Special Olympics folks on the torch run that started at Pietro's Pizza in Milwaukee, and then went all the way up or south on McLaughlin, over the Abernathy Bridge, and then north on Highway Forty-Three. And so we were stopped at a break in Oregon City just before the Abernathy Bridge, and here comes an emergency vehicle, and you could hear it coming, and then all of a sudden there it is, just basically parked, stuck in traffic. And it was responding to actually a potential shooting that turned out to be a suicide, but nonetheless, that car was stuck there in traffic, couldn't move. And finally, actually had to drive across the curb, the island, to get by and get through. So, you know, there's actually three issues. One is some people believe our roads are just fine, some people believe our roads are in poor condition. There's a capacity issue, which is congestion, which I think some people respond to, thinking that our roads might be fine, but we don't have enough of them, or they're not wide enough. So there's just a lot of different opinions out there, and it's really, we are doing a lot of outreach right now, talking about our road situation, and in what people see or what they feel, and trying to understand and educate them, both from a, what we need for new roads, what we need for existing roads, and some of the complications and consequences of that, which all are boiling down to funding, funding, and funding, and just really a lack of it, as inflation goes up, the cost of fuel goes up, the cost of paving roads. And I was struck a little bit by one of the earlier speakers who handed out an article, I don't see the date of the article, but it was basically from the former chair of the commission, and pointing out that, at that time, the county was preparing for a loss of twelve point five million dollars in timber receipts from the federal rural schools, excuse me, the federal rural schools program and rural roads program, and we took a big hit on that. So we have actually lost funding that was once going towards maintenance from this same program. It affected libraries, which is why it was brought forth, but a huge impact, much larger impact on roads. So while costs are going up and our funding streams are actually going down, that disparity, that shortfall is growing, and that's the issue we continue to battle with, and we will continue to talk to people and do our outreach and try to explain those circumstances. And that's all I really have for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Last night I attended the District Advisory Board for NCPRD, discussing a potential ballot measure, a little bit about projects, how you would divide up that money. I thought it was great. I would say that from the people I spoke to, that there is definitely hope that we will continue to proceed, but I believe on Tuesday, we're going to have a further discussion about this and decide whether we should put the effort in to move forward on the district or not at this time. I did talk to Matt Ellington about the Clackamas River alcohol ban. He said it's going very well, and I think it was a good decision on our part, and he mentioned that he drove down the Columbia River and stopped at the sand, where the Sandy River dumps into the Columbia River, and it looked like they might need to consider an alcohol ban, because he said it was a madhouse, out of control down there. So I think that Clackamas County may be providing a model that others should consider. Tonight I'm attending the Fair Board meeting, and I think we should take advantage of the fair in August and start talking to the community about raising money to build a barn. And I'm going to talk to the board tonight about, you know, heading up a campaign to raise money to build a barn. I have stopped by, the building's gone. I believe by the end of the week, the cement will be gone, and the board will be looking at a temporary structure, which is pretty amazing. Those tents these days are amazing. Whether they should buy it, which they could leave up for about five years, which might be the timeframe it takes to raise that kind of money. So we'll be talking to them about that. Also met with the Attorney General at the Children's Center, talking about the challenges facing our youth, and how we're going to deal with that, and there will be an attempt in this next legislature to find some money to build a temporary housing for runaways who may be involved in sex trafficking. And it's a very important thing that they need to talk about. For example, she was telling us about a foster child who ran away. This is like thirteen years old, was involved in the, you know, sex trafficking, decided to run away, and then had no place to go. So she went back, and that's a tragedy.
Wow.
We need to figure out some way to stop this tragedy, and it's going to take a lot of work on the part of local elected officials, as well as state and federal folks, to try to address this problem. Clackamas County, Clackamas Town Center is a prime spot for, you know, convincing youth that maybe they could have a better life. So I think that it's important that Clackamas County get behind, you know, working with the Attorney General and trying to figure out a way to at least possibly help resolve this issue. I don't think we'll ever resolve it, but at least provide some opportunity for runaways to escape and, you know, get back to where a child should be enjoying and learning and becoming productive members of society. So, other than that, I think it's been a pretty challenging week, talking about libraries. And I think Gladstone did a great job, a lot of participants, and they came up with a plan that I think the board is willing to support. We need to resolve some issues in the ballot measure, perhaps do some changes to make sure that those problems are addressed. And I'll tell you that years ago, when that ballot measure passed before it was even voted on, our city manager, Mike Swanson, said, you know, that this is really a short-term fix. The ballot measure is a short-term fix. It will not. In the future, we're going to have to address whether we can fund, or if the taxpayers are willing to fund more services or not, because costs like roads continue to rise, labor costs rise, technology changes, maintenance costs rise, and at some point, you're going to hit a level where the funds you get are not going to be enough. So I believe that will be after I'm long gone, and hopefully, the next board will have the vision to figure out how to resolve that problem, not dissimilar to the Parks District. You know, when it was formed, the rate was probably enough to maintain the parks, but over time, additional parks came online, the revenue never increased, various bond measures that were going to be considered at some point never occurred, so everything has kind of been delayed, it's been delayed for many years. And I think that the consideration, the voters of a bond measure, soon, sooner the better, would make a big difference and provide better service and greater opportunity to all of the citizens of the Parks, Park District. Matter of fact, probably all the citizens of Clackamas County who use facilities at the Parks District, including our baseball fields, and so, at Hoodview Park and North Clackamas Park. And also, our partnerships with various school districts, where we partner with the schools and do some programming on their fields. So I look forward to that discussion on Tuesday.
Wow, I better be short. Actually, thank you, Jim. A couple of things. President Hughes Metro calls together the mayors and the chairs of the region every quarter, and we go over kind of regional issues. It was great to be there yesterday, and actually, all three commission chairs were there, Deborah Cefore, Andy Dyke and myself, and all, a great deal, the majority of the local mayors. It's interesting about the topics, and they're similar to what Commissioner Savas said, it's funding, 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 or they're the lack thereof, is it not? It's always about the money, and Jim said the same thing. Yeah, that NOAA meeting, Tudy and I had the occasion when we were lobbying back in DC to meet with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and so it's rightfully called NOAA. If you ever want to see the ship they have, which they moved up to Newport, it's fantastic, and it's in Newport Bay, not the former restaurant, actually in Newport, Oregon. And fantastic ship and research that they do, but, you know, we have a sea lion problem, which was told to us by citizens here about a year ago. They came forward and told us, listen, we have a problem here. It's an economic problem, it's a tourism problem, and it's a safety problem. We heard some stories yesterday, how these animals, thousand-pound animals, can leap out of the water, fly right over your boat, and take the net out of your hand. One gentleman had his hand tied up in the net because he was reaching to see if it was a native fish or not, which you're required to do before you bring it in. And as he was pulling on the net, literally, it came over the corner of the boat, took the net and the fish, and he had marks on his hands where it was pulled out of his hands. So also, the sheriff's deputy that was there told similar horror stories about these animals. They have increased exponentially from bygone years, and so what they're going to do, and that's in cooperation, and like Tudy said, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife is, is do a study on how we got here, what the problem is, and how many of our species are affected by these sea lions. We already know, I have a friend who's San Brintano, the current chair of the Marion County Commission, who has fished what we used to call the hog line or associated areas for fifty years, and he's finally given up. He says, "There's no reason for me to go out there and catch half a fish, let alone the effect on the run to such an extent as that you don't see people getting up, getting that many fish anymore." There are reports of these animals going up the Sandy River and the Clackamas River for longer than what you would think, and even up into one particular larger creek.
Eagle Creek.
Eagle Creek, yes. So it's interesting that all of a sudden, if you're fishing, and you know where Eagle Creek is, it's quite a ways from the ocean, I would tell you, too. But to see something like that come up there would probably really surprise you, and I'd drop whatever fish I had if I was lucky to have one. So tomorrow morning, I'm going to a class on diversity in the public sector, and one of the great things, this is being held in Wilsonville, Oregon, which just makes it pretty convenient for me. And then, you know, one of the things that's been put off by the college president of the Clackamas community, Joan Tisdale, is a committee that I've been asked to be on to promote the bond, and this is a replacement bond for building, replacement, no new taxes, just continuing on the taxes that people have been paying until the retirement of this specific bond. I am supposed to also announce that the next town hall, which Mary is going to throw up on the screen, will be September tenth at the Estacada City Hall, hosted by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce. The address is four seven five Southeast Main Street in Estacada. And then our final one for the fiscal year, or for this calendar year, is November twelfth. We'll probably be talking about our town halls and the frequency of... We'll probably be talking about our town halls and the frequency of them, and the successes of same at later part of this year, and decide how many we're going to hold next year. That's about it from Clackamas County, Oregon Day, folks. I certainly appreciate those who came, and definitely those people watching on the computer or on their television sets. Wish you the best over this, these wonderful weathered days, and I want to thank you all for coming. There being no further business before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.